Yeah.
Did you need us to sign this?
Ah, here's Greg. Remember Panessa?
So my son is tromping around the room as I'm here, so I'm gonna keep myself on mute, but I'll, I'll come in when I need to.
No worries, we're all used to it. We've all been there. So let's go to the meeting order at seven, nine P M.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Can I just say before moving on to the agenda that we are very excited to have you.
It's got a great feel to it.
So, welcome to your very first.
Oh, I think you'll feel that way when the kids. It's just like, oh. Calm. It's very calm, especially when you get that fresh salty air.
Yeah.
Those are true.
We know that Rockport, there was, there was the bridge from Boston to Rockport, that was just a rapid jam.
Lovely, lovely ride. So, uh, moving on to the meeting approval of our meeting minutes from June twenty fifth, has everyone had a chance to read them?
We're actually done, unfortunately they were sent out. Unless Christian. Is what she sent today. Because if you didn't get them by email, I'd never receive them. So.
That we should.
Medication. Which, and what we could do is just bring them back at the August.
Yeah, let's do that.
And I heard on a email me, and I'll distribute them, I'll probably outrun them by you first, just to make sure you do what was there, and then I'll.
Yeah, well, that's something that.
Couple people out of the chain.
Okay, so let's table those I did send them to you, just now.
Oh, because it's A B four.
No, exactly.
Put your kind of minutes.
So, is there anyone that we took knowledge? Oh.
You said my phone, that's the way dropped off.
Oh, usually two.
Ben joining us today, so thank you very much for joining us. Has anyone received any correspondence or community input that they would like to share? I have not.
Um, I actually have. There's been an increasing concern from a handful of folks about how many dogs are sent, seeing on the property.
Interesting.
On school property, yeah. Is this during school hours, after hours?
All the time. Yeah.
And they're concerned about dog chat.
I think it's like all the above, because like when the dog. Uses the bathroom and then kids roll around in the same grass. I think there are signs.
We can. Go out and purge, discourage. When we see them, I mean, but. But reviews is not very good for Kevin.
No, but happy, Madam Chair, if I may, I'd be happy to address it by, you know, see, see, folks there, I think it would be smart to maybe put flyers out in the neighborhood before we really, you know, do a little education effort, because our challenge is that we have the Heritage Trail. And it goes between the, it goes through our yard, you know, basically, between the Little League and our school grounds. So, um, and the Little League field is part of the school grounds, that's the garden. So, all those multi-use areas, I think, make it a little challenging where it's not, because that's technically where they shouldn't be also. And that's probably the most popular one, more popular bits.
Do we have solid waste? Dog pickup stations, so to speak. Did that, that would at least. If you couldn't stop the surge that people was coming on.
We could certainly try. But. You know, it's a pet peeve, mine, someone will pick up their dog.
And it doesn't meet the statute, I mean, there is a law that says they can't be on. So, we have that. It's not, it's not a preference or, you know, a request.
Sorry.
No, 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 I keep. I understand, I'm sorry. Maybe we can put it in the newsletter too, just says reminder to parents, it looks into each other, that's only to reach people who are not parents. Um, you know, dogs, dogs only on the heritage trail.
Well, that's, that's the challenge, is the heritage trails on the school grounds.
Yeah, but if you say only the heritage trail area, then you're not running around by the playground. You're not running around and feel like, you know. At least they're not supposed to be.
Said it is a, a town ordinance. So, maybe we could.
So, posted on. Yeah.
Put it on their list.
We also, if you find a couple of people, if the police find, they find people who are over the charge that have they this fine. And few people are found, it's going to spread, words, right? Five seconds. So, if we tell, we tell, I mean, we tell the police, just keep a lookout for dogs, or will they, will they allow us?
More under the animal control.
Okay.
Okay, great. Great.
When are they gonna be putting the trail in? Because the trail may help to kind of direct people where they can be and not be, that's, that was part of the town meeting, right?
Um. I don't know the particular.
Madam Chair, if I may, um, the trail already exists, and it starts at Lowlands, and it goes through the classroom playground, and then it goes behind school, but in between the school and the community garden, and then up to Goddard. So, it's, it's actually there, it's more that there aren't that many signs.
I should have said, when are they gonna define it better? I thought that that was one of your pushes, Principal Andrews.
It sure is, it sure is, that's right, we'll be having, um, new signage coming up soon, and, um, a feature in the forest playground.
Okay, because I knew it existed, but I didn't know there were plans, okay, got it.
So maybe that'll be an opportunity to add a sign saying, please be aware or cautious. I don't know, you know.
We can certainly find a right for each.
Madam Chair, I'm sure that the, already exists, so I'd be happy to, um, add some to the property that would make that more clear, and then, you know, have communication with folks in the neighborhood. Because they're our neighbors too, so we want to make sure that we're, we're addressing it appropriately.
Has anyone else received any other correspondence?
I was asked what the superintendent's plan is, but I thought he would lay that out himself here, so that's to have it done that way.
Once the goals were approved, the theory is that I'd send it out, uh, tomorrow through Parent Square. So at least the parents would have it.
Right.
And, uh, in the packet, uh.
Yep.
That I, that I sent out.
Great. Okay. We can move on to the examination and authorization for the payment of bills.
I'm gonna explain these, and if there's no questions. Entertaining someone making the vote to approve the last bills from the twenty-three, twenty-four school year at a total of twenty-three thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars. They are for the following, we're on electric, which is an annual generator, uh, service and testing. Uh, the North Shore Education Consortium is for bill provision services. Uh, National British Power, obviously, coastal maintenance is for custodial supplies, mostly summer type supplies like wax for floors. Easter seals of mass is a special ed tuition bill. And it's a monthly amount. Instant alarm is a service call for a alarm system that's not functioning. Uh. E A Monte is a service call on hard structured, uh, air conditioning system. And it's gonna need some more work, because it's not functioning now either, after two weeks with the service call. So apparently, according to owner, needs another shot of whatever replaced freon. And that's a two thousand dollar rate. And it seemed like with the summer, it was gonna be, that it made sense to say, we'll find two thousand dollars. You know. Report out a dollar bucket somehow. And Alvarez is the balance of the roof project, you had encumbered, uh, either twelve or thirteen thousand, paid for the initial half, so they ordered materials, job is done. Uh, I sent out to everybody a picture of the work and workers. I think it's a really good system to get another ten, fifteen, maybe twenty years out. It looks like one other area of the building had that applied, because it's white surface with moss and mold all over it, where the new surface is applied. It's not an adhesive, but it's a coating, it fixed all the repairs, uh, they re-flashed, uh, they do want to come back and put a cap along the roof line. Because apparently that's a favorite spot for birds to sit. It's not to drive the birds away, it's to keep their waste in decent situation, and their feet from digging into a pretty important part of the roof. So that job is now done, I think they started last Friday. And completed today, so.
That's impressive.
They must have worked during. A T and T is phone, quadrant is postage. Murphy. Blank, blank, and blank is a typical four-person legal firm that you have, supplies your legal services, and A one exterminators takes care of a potential rodent problem. It was activity of traps. But I think they reset the traps. Same issue we had in market. So if those bills are acceptable. You could, um, entertain a motion for the twenty-three, eight, nine, five.
I'll make a motion to approve this month's, uh, bill roll for the amount of twenty-three thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars and ninety cents.
About a second.
My second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Moving on to the superintendent's conflict.
Alright, mine is, uh, fairly short, um, in here, three days last week, uh, be here three days this week. A lot of nice people. Actually had a parent come see me. Email, and that's if they could come in, and I spent a little time, and it was great, I had a good discussion there, uh, I've sent out and the copy is in your packet, but you have kids in school, you would have received it, uh, my welcome letter and profile. And today we got it posted on the website, so that's there. Surveys, new surveys have gone out. One went out to parents, so eight or nine question survey, not exactly like the one that you guys sent out last year, but a little more generic. A little more generic, what are your hopes and dreams, what do you expect out of the superintendent, et cetera, and there's a copy of that, Ben, in the packet. If you want the back. And it's anonymous. So it just goes to who I say can go to. Uh, in terms of the responses, and you have no idea who it came from, and you can get to a I P address in it. So it's safe for people to vent or celebrate, either one. Uh, I did share with the board just before the meeting. If you go in, it's a Google survey, you go to the response tab, you can click on that, I've sent you the one for parents. I have no staff feedback yet, they're probably not looking at doing. And I think the parent one is a little more new and general from the community, as opposed to what might come from the staff. Uh, there were seven responses so far, um, the parent survey, and then only about a day and a half ago.
Did it go on Parent Square?
What's that?
Did it go on on Parents Square?
Yeah, yeah, it went out that way, and, uh, it's the kind of thing you would expect, it's mostly positive stuff, uh. Please don't come here and try to change everything, it was one, one suggestion, uh, we're, you know. Obviously, you wanna change what might need to be changed, but, uh, the comments so far, the initial first was, you know, pretty satisfied. There was the issue about the fifth, sixth grade, swamps, whatever, uh, enrollment levels, I don't think you'd be surprised by the comments that you get. That you'll have a chance to read it apart. Uh, it's confidential to our group for right now. And, uh, some point we can obviously talk about themes and present the results, it's open for feedback through August second. So, that's out there. And the final thing I have is that, uh, one of me have told you, but Mary DeGard, DeGardia, uh, has been appointed the title non-award. And I set up a stipend for her, so that whether there's any cases or not, that she's on retain her basically, to have that responsibility, so it's a small stipend. And then she gets an hourly wage for work related to actual complaints that have to be investigated. So, Tony had started that, uh, Mary took that on, and, uh, I think that's good, otherwise not. That would be my report.
Moving on to the principal's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I would also, uh, welcome the new superintendent, if I may, so it's been a great few days, starting with you, Mr. Reba. Enjoy having you as a neighbor in the main office. Um, my report for tonight, I'd like to start out with a projected enrollment for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Um, I say projected, because we are still looking for some pre-K enrollment. Uh, to go, go forward, I, I have some folks that are expected to be handing in forms, so I'm expecting, uh, twenty-nine pre-K students. Uh, twenty-one kindergarten, twenty-nine first grade, nineteen second, fifteen third, twenty-eight fourth, fifteen fifth, and eight sixth, the student, uh, returning. I think the sixth grade. Um, and so they'll bring us to a total of one sixty-four pre-K to six, and a one thirty-five K to six. The average of fifteen students in the class. That thing's healthy. I also like to share that, um, our art teacher, if you hadn't seen my posting, Laura Chaney was, um, exhibited in the Boston Globe, Sunday Globe, in the visual arts section for her work as a visual artist. Uh, making quilts out of, um, wood that is from, um, actually disasters that, you know, have, reusing and recycling, um, houses and, and making a difficult thing, you know, positive, so that was really nice to see, and I shared that with our community. I want to let you know that IMAX are getting initialized, Tyler Nong's been very busy getting them out, as, um, as classrooms are ready for, after they whack, we've already waxed and prepared about eight classrooms so far, all the summer school ones, and then others as well were prepared, and so those classrooms are now getting the new, uh, machines installed. So that'll be rolling out for the next few weeks. And then the area curriculum instruction, we had, of course, our first day boss member rich program. Very positive first day, um, we have forty-two students enrolled. And excellent programming from our teachers, we have three teachers and a paraprofessional, uh, a nurse and myself, bringing together, uh, starting out the science lesson to get the students excited about the day, and then writing and math based on that. So today went well. And, um, I think students are enjoying it, we are giving students a shift in the library, uh, for the A C. And we also have a cooling station up behind the school, using one of the ten by ten tents and a hose with a mister on it, so, kind of like you might see at amusement parks. So just keeping in mind the weather, um, and the, the fact that it's soon summertime, they want to have fun and really be comfortable, and so we're taking turns like that.
How many students are enrolled in this?
Forty-two. Yeah, forty-two. We have, of course, mostly kindergarten first and second, uh, is where the, the greatest enrollment is. Uh, but we have good ratios with teachers. And then finally, I'd like to, uh, bring your attention to handwriting without tears, and I'd like to, um, ask that you approve this as a curriculum material, I've provided you your, um, your policies for instructional materials and uh, textbook selection and adoption. Um, this past year, we had a pilot for the program. Um, I gave you a couple of pages, uh, it's just fabulous, the way they, uh, teach handwriting. We have, uh, foundations, and that's an excellent program for phonics and learning how to read, learning letter sounds. Um, but handwriting without tears, designed by occupational therapists, um, has much more about letter formation. So, it starts with printing, it actually starts with wood blocks in pre-K. And the students in pre-K get pieces to make letters. And then kindergarten, they learn how to form letters and, um, identify the letters, and then, um, in third grade and fourth grade, they learn cursive. And cursive isn't just about capturing data, it's also about learning the material, and so writing, uh, has been found to be a great way to learn things. Uh, keyboarding is one thing, that's more about capturing data, but writing helps the students really get it in their mind, especially if you use a graphite pencil and pen, and paper. And so, um, that's part of the reason for, for this, if you think back to your college classes, just, you know, outlining a textbook was helpful in remembering, uh, material. And so, in the same way, uh, we're using that for this, uh, we've had great success with grades three and four, uh, fully adopting the handwriting program. Um, because we didn't have one previously, and that is part of the state standards. Um, and then this year, we looked at foundations versus handwriting without tears, and I brought a couple of copies of, um, of the books. The cursive, it's a cursive book, and this is a kindergarten book.
It's great, you know, I think, I think it's great.
The kindergarten teacher especially, um, liked the amount of practice, um, that it provides. Um, one thing that's unique about it, it has two lines, as opposed to our current program, it's four lines, and so, there's a there's three lines that you normally see in elementary school, and then the fourth line in the, in the current program. So, um, that, we found that to be a little bit more confusing for students, we introduced the two lines, and then when they get older, in the third grade, we introduced the three lines. Um, because the main, the main thing about printing is that you just want to make sure the first two lines are right, you don't really mind if the, some of the parts go higher or lower, so. Um, some of the idea behind it.
Excellent. Yes. Can I have a motion to approve the handwriting without tears, so. Just a second, second, all in favor?
Hi.
To reprogram.
Fabulous, I've heard of it.
Sure that matches its name.
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Cheryl, that concludes my report.
Thank you, so moving on to old business. See, we have some line item transfers. Did we, did we do the one in C N D?
Opening of school professional development activity is just what's gonna happen that first day. In general.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Okay, yes.
Um, so on the, the first day, we have a schedule already for our new dibbles, um, that we've been talking about throughout the year. Again, this is, uh, the state right now is really focused on early literacy, uh, you may have seen in the news about, um, how important it is to have a research-based literacy program, and so dibbles is a way to assess, uh, early learning, and we're gonna be using it up through sixth grade. Um, and so the training is gonna take place, it's gonna be our second day of training, now being the first day of school, starting at ten thirty. And then I'll go till one, so we're gonna, we'll open with the superintendent welcoming, uh, special education and training, and then we'll have, um, dibbles training, uh, ten thirty to one, and then the afternoon will be for teachers to, um, complete setting up the classrooms.
You're all invited to the opening. And then I'm sort of either known for or unknown for as my opening. Quite a, set a good tone for the year.
Well, lovely, yes, we typically.
Folks can come, even if the chair wants to do a little encouragement, piece, short piece. Kind of nice for the faculty, the staff to see you. And to know that the school committees following what they're doing and support.
I will.
Since I had to remind Kevin of his, I need to remind myself of mine under superintendent's report, the new Y M C after-school program finally will be approved. Flip back to that. There, it's in your packet, uh, you had a presentation of this, I believe, that me and I attended in June. The Bs are the same, the staffing is all handled by the Y, they do all the employee core checks and fingerprinting, uh, the only left Daniel Chad question has to do with and Kevin's gonna get the answer to that, the assurance about the medical needs of kids, and how does the Y staff do that, because obviously our staff doesn't do that. They certainly do it, but in terms of, you know, medicine distribution, you know, for a kid, uh, orders, you know, from the doctors and that kind of stuff, so we just need to get confirmation that the Y handles that piece, and Cheryl Delisio brought it up to us, she called Swanskill and said they're very satisfied with the program, and it's turned to him and he had loved it. But she did ask us about making sure about the medical piece, so that our nurse doesn't get calls while the Y program is going on, about things that the Y protocol should and that we make sure parents understand that it's a completely, uh, capsulated program by the Y. And we obviously supervise it, make sure it's working the way it should, but there's no responsibility for the school in the program. So we get things moved, probably ought to have a vote for approval. Uh, so that Kevin can make a call, and they can get their staff in line, uh, spaces and all that sort of stuff, and we'll get confirmation of medical piece that's still out there.
Are they gonna do the same sorts of things as Island Roots?
Yes, that's our, yes, absolutely, they have, um, I mean, I, I think it's a different program, it, it looks to me that they'll have, uh, management review, it looks to me that'll have more, um, a little bit more activities, more, more, just get more planned activities, is how, how, uh, presented.
Like, does it, it includes homework help?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And quiet reading time, it's kind of like outdoor, brush yourself dry time, and all that.
One of the things they're most excited about is the outdoor space.
Okay.
And, um, and the facility itself, and so, yeah, they have, they have the homework support that we saw.
Nice.
And, um, and they want to use a lot of the, uh, staff that are, because of my.
Great.
So, can I have a motion? These.
Right. I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation from Superintendent Nevo. Um, that the Johnson School engage and sign this contract with the Y M C A of Metro North After School School Book Services for the FY twenty-five school year.
Five second, five second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'd have been in a real tough place without the Y staff.
Yes, and, yeah. That's great, congratulations.
Okay, so that concludes the superintendent's report and the principal's report in its entirety, so we can move on to board business, we have some line item transfers.
There are just the last few line item transfers, remember there to make sure they're in the lines with a negative balance. So they are sped contracted services for legal, fifteen hundred and sixty-six dollars. From maintenance of building supplies to custodial salaries, six hundred and seventy-five dollars. Maintenance of grounds to municipal building services, nine seventy-one, seventy. And from sped contracted services to sped tuition private schools, forty-six hundred for a total of seventy-eight, twelve seventy. And from sped contracted services to sped tuition private schools, forty-six hundred for a total of seventy-eight twelve seventy. Doesn't raise any money or it just shifts the money around the line to the new account. These are not allowed by law to have a negative balance in the line. So that probably should be voted.
Yes. May I just ask that same too? Oops, in terms of you. May I have a motion that that um too, too short? Um, I'll make a motion to move a one thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars from the line item sped contracted services to the line item legal. I second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Related to that item, um this says that looks like the free cash amount to turn back to town. This is exact number eighty-nine thousand nine hundred and fourteen dollars. That's a little smaller than some previous years. But I believe without some of that circuit breaker of extra reimbursement you got that uh you have had that.
Right.
Uh, still turning money back that was budgeted back to the town.
Yeah.
It's just not as big as it had been in some of the other years.
It's pretty.
And obviously you wanna turn free cash back, but it'll sop up the new budget for what you need and
Yeah.
without spending freely for things that you won't need. My philosophy is to use the school budget at best interest of the kids.
I would agree.
And not put the town in a bad position because you have to ask for a wee budget, but it's not necessarily my goal to turn back lards some to money unless they're left on the table. And I think you're obligated to do that.
Yeah.
You don't play games and hide it or buy materials from next year. That used to be one of the boys of some superintendents that go order all the supplies for next year with leftover balances from the previous year.
There's a lot of.
That's a little deceptive, I think. So. But it's something that my philosophy, I think you you budget for what you need and you service the kids the best you can.
Um, yes. Um, I'll propose a motion, make a motion to move the line item from the line item maintenance of building supplies, six hundred and seventy-five dollars to the line item custodial salaries. Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
I'll make a motion to nine hundred and seventy-one dollars and seventy cents from the line item maintenance of grounds to the line item maintenance of building services. My second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
I'll make a motion to move forty-six hundred dollars from the line item sped contracted services to the line item sped tuition private schools. My second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Moving on to additional line conferences.
A couple of the items that are required in my contract on the job, including the calendar that shows the dates for expected work to uh equal a hundred days minimum. I consider it minimum. Uh, I think it's hard to do a two-time drop in two days a week. This is what it is. You do what you have to do, you work until work home, work extra days, but by op, by contract, I have to show you where at least hundred of those days are. So in general, it's Tuesdays and Wednesdays uh once the school year gets going. I just know who I am. I'm probably gonna be here three. Not to get into Kevin's business in any way, but just I think it's important that you're around. It's not a full day on day three or a full day on day four, but um, I don't know, just how I'm wired. So I don't know if you have to vote that or just by consensus say, well, it's good for us. And I will obviously adjust this. If, if, if Kevin is out for some reason, he goes to a conference or whatever, I'll move my day so that there's an administrator built. So that a staff is not left with what happens if there's a discipline issue or whatever. So I'll be flexible once the school year start. Right now, I'm getting tied into another job by doing the summer in terms of voting. But once it gets to be the fall, then it's I could go any day.
Thank you.
It won't leave you unsavored and uncovered.
We should probably just. You want to be there?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I'll make a motion to approve uh Superintendent Evo's uh two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five school calendar days present, uh minimum days present for this year. First, okay. My second. All in favor?
Hi.
And the final one is that uh we've kind of would have done this in the summer. I'll present you with the Desi required a value to goals that you use as at least a a baseline to measure the performance of your superintendent. Um, so they're smart goals, which again means that they're specific, measurable, achievable, relevant in time. You're supposed to have at least one each category of professional practice, student learning, district improvement. Uh, some reason I always have more than those. Uh, I have four district ones, two student learning ones and two district improvement ones for a total of eight. And they are as follows. I won't read the entire text to you, but the first one is in the category of communication and school culture. It's a professional practice goal. Uh, the goal description is to improve and enhance communication, cooperation, collaboration with all Johnson School stakeholders. And to also improve the overall level of quality and depth of the school culture that's involved. Yeah, I think the main focus is gonna be on communication. Uh, I think the culture's pretty solid, what I gather already. And then the specific benchmarks, action steps are listed below. Uh, we give each one again. The first is to conduct a series of voluntary entrance interviews, which is to invite people to come in, sit down, close the door and hopefully trust me enough to share something with me that they don't wanna have leave the office or to make sure I know about or to celebrate or whatever. And that'll take a little while to establish that trust. You know, in terms of people coming in and actually believing to that. And I think that's where the survey comes in, whatever you want on the survey. But I do want people to know that I have an open door and that's the second bullet. Establishing immediate open door policy. Uh, saw a lot of kids go by my office today and the door was open. Looking in, waving at them. I've always believed that unless you're in a meeting you might close doors for something that people should be able to see who you are, come in, say hi. High school level, come in and lunchtime and play a musical quartet that they're working on, tapping in Rockport. Kind of makes the job worthwhile by your shifting money around. So at this level, it's a little different. But I'm sure kids wanna know who you are and what you do. I want them to feel free that they can you can stop and say hi. Uh, the next one is to uh conduct a series of sort of town meetings with officials. So meet with Tony, meet with uh the police chief, meet with the fire chief. I'm meeting the library to see if I can get by the guard at the Northeastern complex and sneak in there and see that. Uh, related to that, we did receive the check for twenty-five thousand dollars that from Northeastern. Which remember there was some concern that maybe the uh
What's happening?
Land issue that was going on might have reduced Northeastern's interest on Tony. But that check came through just like it did every year. So that's, that's a really good thing to have them do that. And then something I've always done that's a little unique, I do something called neighborhood needs, which is to uh put out an all call to five or ten different folks who are willing to offer their house up for me to come over, bring the freshmen. They invite people in their neighborhood. Um, whether they have kids in school or not. And we talk school, but on their turf. And I've learned a lot more in those kind of things than I learned in having to perform everybody in a gym amazing or cafeteria. And so I'm hoping that will work here. Uh, my sense is it will. And then the last one is to try to have a high level of physical presence and overall visibility. And with Tony's permission, I'm gonna be able to, not, not Tony. Kevin's permission, Tony does not want to go for this. Uh, with Kevin's permission to be able to uh wind a glass integrate a classroom and try to help set the tone for expectations. What it means to, you know, go to the Johnson School and what I sort of expect is the overall version of character. And that's not to take away Kevin's emphasis, but I think we'll tag team that. And uh kids to be looking in the eye and know that you're invested in the school and that you want them to be invested what they're here for, for the right reasons. Even in their kids, kids are gonna be kids. But I think it's the responsibility of those in charge to help set the tone. So that would culminate the communication cultural. Except for the last thing, which is on the second page, the bullet about I have a dream and I've done it before of doing a school pledge. Getting a big vinyl banner with nothing on it. And going around and having kids, adults, community members suggest values, statements and putting that on that banner. And then having a place where the participants, both adult and child can sign if they agree and commit what's on that banner. No obligation to do that. But it's homegrown. It's what they want their school to be. And by signing it, they're committed to do that. And they can point out, hey, we're supposed to be, you know, kind to each other or what, however it might be said by a kindergarten or a sixth grader or a teacher who's been here thirty years. And maybe color coded, so it's different colors for different grade levels or whatever. But uh and then mount that on a wall space somewhere. Yet to be determined. So that's the last part. Second goal is a labor relations negotiations goal this year. You negotiate uh contracts with your teachers association and your support staff. Um, I would like to see it get done early before budget time. So that you got real numbers and you aren't playing and oh, we can't do this because the budget's already passed or you know, that you have a fair and equitable negotiation that helps drive what you need. You don't, you know, give away this, the candy store with it, but at least you know the lay of the land. Get stuck in a bad place where you have no contract for here for it. And I laid out the sort of timeline there, you know, with your approval that uh we begin the process in early to mid-September. Uh, begin the actual negotiations in October and try to have them uh culminated by November. Have a new three-year contract agreed to and ratified. That then builds your budget. Once you've done that, then you might have to do that for the next two years. But right now, that's a huge unknown for you know, a line item that's eighty percent of your budget, probably personal costs. So that's that goal. Next one is a school safety goal. And that's to review the existing uh all hazards plan and a nice red uh what you call.
Flip charts?
Flip chart, perfect name for, for a flip chart and uh to roll with that with the police chief and the fire chief and just make sure there's no gaps there. I became indoctrinated in the Alice program for school safety. School shootings happened. Uh, I got trained in that and whether the town does Alice or not, it's a pretty nationwide approach about uh how you deal with hazards and dangers within your school. Cause you're, you have a small police department, right? And you're geologically, uh geographically not quite so easy to get to necessarily from the mainland. And time is important. So we're gonna make sure that the emergency services in the school are on the same pages and that the staff is well-prepared and knows what the procedures are. No lockdowns and that sort of thing. Uh, drills. We used to drill in Rockport, especially with the high school kids, with the young kids, we talked through scenarios. Did actually do live active shooter drills, something like that. I think probably the feeling is you wouldn't wanna put your young kids through that, not to intensive. But I'm not sure of that. I need to talk to police chief and fire chief a little bit and to get a feel for what parents want and expect.
What have we done in the past? I thought we could do the active shooter.
We, uh, manager, we have actually done a um active, we have observed through the Nahat Police Department. Um, and it was, it was role-playing uh for adults only. It was just the staff, which was, which was perfect for us, I think. But I think it was very moving. Um, I think it was, you know, potentially emotional. Um, but I think I really, we really appreciated the partnership with Nahat Police. They were very well-trained. Um, they had jackets. They had a, a scenario. Uh, we got to observe, which was more than I needed. I mean, it wasn't more than I needed, but it was just the right amount for an adult.
I mean, it, it's on a scale, you know, from
Mm-hmm.
You don't do it to overdo it. In some places, there's, you know, little paintballs and they're allowing they shoot the faculty with the paintball. It was like, you should have done this and that. I'm not there. I'm way back along the line of you should be able to make sure that the adults for sure know exactly what to do. And there's a situation that you hope never happens. Including the philosophy that if you're in the building and you're locked in this library, let's say, and something comes on the speaker, the problem is way at the other end of the school. You don't necessarily in Alice stay in this space, even though you can get out of here safely.
True.
Then get out of here. That's the evacuation E-letter of Alice. And uh, I think that's super important to look at what happened in Columbine. People didn't leave their spaces. That wasn't a good end result. So that the, the philosophy is making sure you are a good judge and if you can get out and evacuate, then you go to a common area for gathering. And I think you already have that. It's down at the what it's called.
The Knights. That's Columbus.
Knights of Columbus building. So that kids who were outside, who now run off into the woods or whatever, know that they should go to the Knights of Columbus. Where there's police and staff who know who was maybe still in the building who you can't account for. So it's, it's one of the worst things to talk about, probably one of the most important things to really make sure your adults know.
Where are you, where do the children like? I hear you. We certainly don't wanna traumatize our kids and then start them like paintballists. My gosh. But um, I do want, I think, you know, I think about the older kids and I would want them to like know enough to like make sure that they know to follow exactly the directions of the teacher. This isn't something we're out about. And the younger ones, just enough about it seems like they know, they need to know a little bit about what to do.
There's such a fine line there. Like if you're in the bathroom. Because in Alice, the alert part is whoever gets on the speaker on their phone or whatever says exactly what's going on.
Yeah.
There's a tall uh white male with a rifle in the office actively shooting. Their kid's gonna hear that. I mean, high school level, you might practice that statement. And the kids would deal with that. This level, I've seen it be done. There's a uh moose that's gotten into the building. So it's and at least the kids know, well, that's not safe, is it? No, a big animal is gonna stomp you maybe. If you stay in the bathroom, you get up on the stall. Do you go to your classroom, which unfortunately is now locked because they locked it down? You can't get in. Kids should know those kind of scenarios, but I think you have to do it without the tall white male. Kids should know those kind of scenarios, but I think you have to do it without the tall white male.
I I like them, actually.
I think in talking with the police and maybe having a a public forum before we. Do a a drill with parents and say, this is like what we'd like to say, and this is why we say. The only part of Alice is the C word that I have a little bit of a difficulty with, and that's counter. Which is theoretically, if we were in this library, six of us, lights would be off, we wouldn't all be gathering in one spot. And we would be looking at what we maybe could throw at somebody who came in here to distract them. And I've done with high school kids, talked that through. But we've certainly never had a live person break into a locked door and then throw erasers at them. But the countering part is important, uh the barricade, practicing the barricade. So that someone who has limited time. And unfortunately is on a mission to do as much damage as they can, as quick as they can, can't get into the space. I I think kids can talk about, yeah, I'd take that projector and I'd take this table. That would keep the moose out, or whatever, I'm not sure that we could be able to fear, but it may be could be. And uh it's it it's it's a tough one, but if you want your kids to be safe. Certainly your adults need to know what to do. I hate talking about it every time we do it, but our our drills in Rockport got to the point where the kids all got to Smith Road in Montfort. Police were all there, they handed it with great respect, we announced that we were doing the evacuation to all the places in the area. And once we've done it, the first couple of drills, it was just so, yeah, we do this folks here. And it doesn't become much different than a fire drill there, and you can be in real trouble when the fire in the building too, so. But anyway, that's that goal, is meet with the police and go over that. And the next one is a transition to Swamp School, Middleland High School. And that's with Kevin's assistance to analyze the existing Johnson school curriculum. With respect to how it interfaces with that of Swamp School, look for any inherent gaps. Uh the plan is to meet with Pam Andalocas in August, uh she's retiring at the Ironman Institute Lieutenant. I still think, I know her pretty well, she's gonna go right to the final done of next year and uh.
Too sleepy at the end of next year.
To help us out with some things that, you know, we might not have heard before or whatever. And to get access to some of their curriculum committees, maybe do, I think I talked about it at. At my interview of some exchanges, a couple of our teachers go over there and observe some classes and their teachers come over here. Uh and the other thing I wanna do is to go to Swamp School, meet with the kids who went here. In little lunch meetings, I get the pizza uh and. Seniors who are gonna graduate from Swamp School, who went in the hot five years ago. What was good, what was bad, what we could change uh. And just turn those notes back as to what could have made it better, your transition better. I don't know what they'll say, but kids are made, we're pretty strong.
Graduates and the middle school graduates.
Well, I do it with the freshmen, and make, I'm not the freshman, in this case, the sixth grader. Now, how did you make the drink up to fit in, how did people treat you, and what did it feel like coming over? Most sixth grader can verbalize that pretty well.
Bro, I love that, I, if I can interrupt for a second, I love that you would put in that. I thought that that was great, and I think you can learn a lot from the students, you know, about their experience after they've had a year. At Swamp School Middle School, I'd ask the ones that went traditionally, he's seventh grade as well. Um I was gonna add that I think talking to teacher, not just the the cross pollination, which is always a great. Thing for schools to do, but to also maybe survey the teachers on areas that they feel like students were really prepared well. And and places where they that they have ideas, always we can strike that the preparation in a value add way. Like assuming all good intent, assuming things are fine, we kids do do mostly fine, right, but. I I know a lot of the Swamp School middle school teachers and they have opinions, right? And so let them have a vehicle to get these things out so that we can benefit from that.
You know, I'm certainly, it's a double edged, you know, sword in that you're gonna hear, we went to a. Safe, comfortable place where everybody knew who we were, and then went to a big sea of kids, you know. Teachers didn't even know our name, uh but there's, obviously. Bits and pieces on either side of that.
And maybe some ideas, like, I mean, we know enough to know, like, what we can filter through, you know, like, it's something to do with that, yes. It is a small school and that is a bigger school, but I think sometimes. I know in my own experience as an educator, I'm interested in like the middle, the, I don't wanna say, like the new, like, the new ideas or something we wouldn't have. Thought of or a perspective that we wanna think about, and then we think about how we think about. And with Mr. Andrews about how it apply, you know, by, it's just, it's data that's out there and it's.
And the first steering, first student learning goal is a curriculum review and patient. Like to work to establish a three-year curriculum review cycle. That certain subject areas pop up in a given year for more emphasis in terms of looking for what else is out there. Possibly the. Well, faculty, um Kevin would be the key point person for that, cause he needs to be, cause it's. I said that a lot, it's his building, and uh I I think I need to be part of helping to organize that, where Kevin is to what that looks like. Then what subject areas are the first ones to be looked at? I do hear even in the seven people, there's a little bit of offer review of the math program. Came in on a post, not that it's a terrible math program, but that there may be some. More cutting edge programs out there that could be looked at, so. But by having that cycle, you know, every number of years, you're gonna look at the math program, you can look at social studies, you can look at handwriting. And and to put that in cycle, so that's the first learning goal. The second one is a flicking of an instruction goal, this is a dream of mine. That's to start a fundraising effort to uh build a greenhouse on the property here somewhere so you can. Actually continue the strength that you have already, gardening program and stuff like that throughout the year. And I know it can be done, cause I did it in Rockport, we raised all the money for it and did a barn raising, we did it three weekends. I had a oversight guy and put the thing up, provided food to the food pantry. Uh provided food to the cafeteria, they all went along, or not cherry tomatoes for. Higher talent of Swamp School, that were that were grown in that. And uh Kevin has a name, relate to that is to maybe as part of that. I'm gonna figure out we could open up this wall for a library that right now has no windows. And make this so that it is able to view out on to what is a remarkable view out of this space. And to do that through a fundraising effort, possibly. See how that goes. Quite to usually have some kind of project in a given year, we did solar one year, we did uh. Weather station, we did the greenhouse, so hopefully we do that. And district improvement goals, first is on long range planning. That is to restart a committee to look at a new three-year rolling strategic plan. The last one we have is out of date, finished up a couple of years ago. And develop a broad committee to get some major fence posts for that plan. I believe you don't do a three-year strategic plan and then do another one, you do a rolling one. Every year you have done some of the things that are in that plan and you add another year. So it's always a three-year plan, always looks three years ahead, but you never really completed it, just morphs over time. And then the final goal is to do a five-year plan for maintenance and capital outlay. But you're in pretty good shape on that, and uh Tony met his promise that he would. Make sure he finished the roof, and that's done, but you're you haven't overbuilt, stuff that's gonna have to be done. You should be planning for those capital needs. Tony was a former contractor, I think, so he's kind of an expert in that, I could build a doghouse. Jingles and wood scraps, so uh maybe it's some sort of building consultant comes in and evaluates. These boilers are losing their lives or whatever, and that may involve some budget money for next year. But otherwise than that, those would be my goal.
Thank you. I don't, they're official D E S I goals, no?
Maybe we just vote on the acceptance of the performance review at the end of that year. And I think we we voted on them, we said like them.
You can vote to accept. Swan lab, I don't know. Second, all in favor?
Hi.
So I will send this out to parents first so people can have some concept of what I need to work on.
I meant to make one comment, I love the plan, but I love it, I didn't like the vote, but. I I think you should add um a a terrible there's in the plans, but. I think having a parent, like an upper school parent and a lower school parent, meaning. Open meeting might be um great, you know, you know, company wants or office hours, like come on in and um. You know, questions, meet you, et cetera, these ones that you were about in your plan were. That you mentioned parents, but then there wasn't a parent specific one, and I would offer our parents. I think this would work.
Wasn't that, that's all I have.
Is there any other committee business? No, any announcements that anyone wants to make? If no, then I have a motion to adjourn this meeting at eight ten P M.
I'll make a motion to adjourn tonight's school committee meeting at eight ten P M.
Second, all in favor?
Hi.
I've had past couple.
Ben has wanted to say hi to you all the entire time.
How are you? Very handsome.
Thank you, have a good night, everyone. Take care.
Oh, iPhone did come back on.